Good evening. I'd like to call this August 4th, 2025 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Adam, can you call the rule?
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mrs. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Here.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Here.
We waited as long as we could, Mr. Feller.
Sorry, I thought it was at the admin building.
That's what we thought you did, but we are all on SLS. Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is our first opportunity for public participation on...
No one signed up.
No one signed up, okay. Well, some of you, we are going to ask for public participation because we might have questions. So then we are with you for our policy for a first read, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, ma'am. I am recommending item 3.1, a policy for a first read specifically regarding personal communication devices. As many folks may know, that the governor and Ohio Legislature recently passed law or some requirements for public schools in regards to the use of cell phones in the building during instructional today... during the instructional day. That attachment is provided in the agenda and is also available online for the first draft. And we are here to discuss that draft tonight and how the district would like to proceed.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we're going to have a discussion about it. We've all read it, correct? And we have both high school principals here because this primarily affects high schools because of the policy we have in place now, pretty much K through eight.
Yes.
There's no using of cell phones. And I don't think there is in high schools either really, but the kids can have it between classes and it's been a little looser, right? And at lunch and...
It's a little bit. In the beginning, about six years ago, we installed the wall caddies based on feedback from teachers. And so the majority of our classrooms, they come in, put them on the wall, and then they get their class.
When I surveyed our building, it's about, or that's between like teachers and kids. Like, so that's the expectation, but I guess it's not me that I haven't called you enough, but it's about one-third who's in it in a lot of classrooms.
Okay. And so I think, I think we all agree there's some question about what's an instructional day? Is it from first bell to last bell? You know, so what do those things look like? And this is, you know, a new thing that's happening, so I guess...
Correct. A couple of schools of thought, if I may add. In most circumstances, along with colleagues that I've talked to and here in the district working with our high school principals, with the law saying instructional day, we're looking at first bell to last bell. Bell of first period, last bell of the day, that students would not be able to have access to their phones. Now, there is another school of thought in all transparency. Several years ago, it's probably been a little over a decade now, at one point in time, when school districts went from number of school days to hours, there was a thought process at that point in time that instructional minutes were time that teachers were in front of students. So your hall passing time and lunchtime was not considered part of the instructional day. But that was again presented for when we were looking at the number of minutes in schools or the number of hours in school to meet ODE requirements. I think the challenge that presents itself, and I think again why we have our principals here as well as Mrs. McDonald, who's over support, student support services, is looking at the management of having 1,300 students in a building and looking at what that instructional day looks like in our interpretation, or I should say your interpretation as board members of instructional day. Is it from first bell to last bell? Or is the board interested in nuancing out certain aspects of the day, such as the lunch period or in between classes, students would be able to have access? I know in listening to our principals, they are advocate for first bell to last bell. And that's what the feedback we've heard from the high school staff.
And so while it's not normal that we do back and forth, I think we're going to do that because you are in the buildings. And I think we all want to be deferential, like you're running these buildings and we understand that's a challenge for high school buildings. But I'm on policy committee with Dan, and Dan brought up a really good point that, I mean, kids are, all their extracurriculars, it's like Remind 101. So if they're not having access to know that this practice was canceled or that practice was canceled or we're doing it then, and they don't see it until after the last bell, and they've already missed their bus or whatever, what, I mean, how are you going to get around communicating with kids during the day? Because let's face it, I mean, this is 2025. Like, nobody goes to the bank, like, we do everything electronically, and so do kids. So how do you get around that?
Yeah.
That was one of the first things we thought.
Absolutely. I think that's a great question. So I think that there's a, there's a little bit of a delineation that you're going to have between policy that you are developing and putting into place versus the practical application. So the practical application of this policy that you all are currently looking at mirrors our current junior high policy in which the cell phones are in their lockers or communication devices are in the lockers. We put forth that they're not going to have them, access to them during the instructional day, but in practical application, if I'm a student and I stop by my locker in between first period and second period, open up my locker, grab my math book, and look at my Remind 101, there's a coach from, a message from my coach, a message from my mom, nobody is going to roll up on your kid and say, "Oh, my gosh, hand me that cell phone right now." That's just not how practical application is going to work with this. So I think that you raise a really good point as far as getting those messages. Having said that, I do think that the way that this policy is written would allow a student to, at least within the 40-minute block periods, that space of passing period, be able to keep up to date on any sort of emergency communication. If there was, in fact, emergency communication, our phone lines are always open as well. So, I mean, previously, we had no issue getting messages to kids.
Beyond that, we do have scrolling messages on the TVs. We can do PA announcements. So like, emergency changes or things like that where they would have to know, there'd be no reason you couldn't spend 30 seconds at the beginning of a class coming on the PA to say what the changes are. Or when we used to make announcements at the beginning of plane period to let everybody know that, we go back to that.
Yeah, and, I mean, I agree with you, like, if it's in the locker, some kids are going to look. But, you know, one of my kids, if you said to her in high school, "Your phone is in your locker until after last bell," she wouldn't look at it. I mean, I'm not saying that that's typical, but you certainly have kids who are very much rule followers who I don't think would be doing, I mean, I certainly would have looked, but I have a kid who would not have. So, I mean, that, I think, is a, is a concern, right? And...
My maintenance, I should say maintenance, there are a few problems that I think the cell phones have. Just they continue to change the game and we can't quite keep up. Like texting to meet the restroom. The cheating, like, because it's just so easy to snap things and send things and get answers to things. A big one is, I'll just say fighting, but there's lots of stuff that's done for social media cloud. And things are just recorded, like, no one offers help, just like, there's just 50 people recording things. And if we took that away, I think that would help that quite a bit. I'm not saying there's never going to be another fight in South East, so, but yeah, I just think it changed the dynamic of the one we saw like at the beginning of the year last year when Mr. Jop comes off the ground. And it's basically just a bunch of people recording and no one will tell me. So definitely a few items in addition to what I think is the obvious, which is like the in and out distract line of a kid in a class period, which is the number one goal we're trying to fix. And that's why I'm a little less worried about it. I, I get it, we probably have to have some sort of nuanced policy to use large word, but the, the main part of what I'm concerned about is those 40-minute chunks of the teacher being able to have the attention of the teenager.
I guess the way I'm, I see our dilemma or our choices today. Obviously, we have the state mandate. And I, which I frankly, and I think most people do agree, we don't want kids on their cell phone during class. I mean, I, I, for the reasons Casey just said, and it's distracting, and I think we all agree with that. And I, I'm, but I think the decision, as I understand it, that we have to make is whether we're going to allow kids to use it to look at their cell phones at lunch and in between class. And whether or not we will allow that cell phone to be on their person and just not out. So if it's on their person, and, and I guess the problem I'm having, and, and thank you for that example because that makes sense to me, but if, if our policy just says they, they cannot be used during the instructional day. So that means we better not see your phone. But if they're on your person, is, is the concern that the temptation is just too much? I, I guess I don't understand how kids are on their phone during class if our rule is they don't use them. Is it because teachers?
I think it's, I think it's a, it's a great question. I think every parent wrestles with that as well. You know, I mean, I've, I've told my child to clean the bathroom for the last three days. He knows to do it. I've set the expectation, but it's still not getting done. I think that the kids have that, the temptation is very strong because it's a part of their existence now. It's a part of their social networking now. I think that one of the challenges that we run into, and Casey and I just kind of had some sidebar conversation, when we look at something like even allowing it for the cafeteria in a high school that leaves, a lot of our kids, or I should say a lot of our kids, some of our kids don't even eat in the cafeteria. We've got kids that, for example, we're doing band camp right now. Kids will go down into the music wing and they'll eat with their friends outside in the teachers' classrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not even as though we could make like the cafeteria only the safe zone because we've got kids that eat lunch all over the place sometimes. They go up to the media center, they go up into, sometimes they're getting together, like our Stuco kids, who get together in a teacher's classroom for lunch to do their planning or what have you. I think that that's, that represents or presents a challenge to us as far as being able to follow the policy and be able to execute the policy with fidelity.
I want to try to answer the question directly as I can. The thing that I've heard from a lot of teachers is that it's just not worth the, the fight, that there should be, it just becomes so big of a disruption when you give 40 minutes essentially, that it's not worth having that battle. And you'd like to think there were natural consequences on it. And if they were adults, maybe, but what, what, it gets turned around on the teacher. The teacher's the bad guy for not teaching them the material or what have you. That's what we hear from the parents when really it was like Johnny's the one who wasn't paying attention, who was distracted, and the natural consequence should be the poor grade or that they didn't understand this or whatever. But that's just not how it works. Like, there's pressure from parents or the teacher has a bleeding heart and they want to still help that kid. So it becomes this, it becomes a very sticky situation to enforce it. And that's why I sort of have that wry smile about the one-third. It's like even some of our best teachers are like, phone is part of the world. I'm going to allow you to have this, but I expect you to, to treat it, you know? And it's just, I think that's where we're struggling. It's just not working.
I can say as an instructor, it is really difficult to teach with cell phones. And I teach adults where I don't have the ability to punish or, but it's... It buzzes, you don't hear it, but it's noticed and that's distraction. And so I, I empathize with the, the struggle that the teachers have.
And if you do have a kid who's struggling, but this could land on his phone, that's not fair for that other child.
Well, but...
It's tribal.
And it's not even just playing. I mean, if it's in your pocket and it buzzes, that's...
Ma'am, ma'am, if you have public comment, we need you to write it down so that we know who it is. Like, we have to, our treasurer has to keep appropriate minutes. We're sort of asking them because they're running the high schools and we kind of want their feedback as we work through this. So we appreciate you being here and your comment. And feel free to sign up if you'd like to give us some comments.
The, the little interruptions at the locker, I think, could become one of these points that we have to tease out a little bit further. But it might be counter to the argument of policy. The other thing I failed to mention of, of like my big, I believe, is why I'm in support of banning them, is all of the harassment. And I think just to not have the constant, I mean, some of our kids, it's like, it feels like it's almost why they're here. And that's, I don't remember that even just a little while ago. Not, not crazy, I'm not saying that was 20 years ago. But it's just all about the social media and a little bit of harassment. And like, I'm going to pick, nitpick, nitpick, and that, that's what turns into so a lot of fights is just...
I think, yeah, I think to piggyback off what Casey's saying as well, just in recent history. And I understand, as many of you, if not all of you know, a lot of the kids at Northview I knew in elementary school. So I've kind of seen this progression of how they come. And it's not all of our students, but I will say that just from a community standpoint, we do have many of our kids that are struggling with socialization and intercommunication skills face to face. They have such a digital presence and such a digital existence, which can be good. And I think that that's, that's just the times that we're in. But the sacrifice for that is that when they are in a predicament or they are in a social situation where they have to engage with somebody face to face, there are many of our kids that are struggling with it. They, they're feeling anxious about even having to do it in some respects because it's a lot easier to send a text. It's a lot easier to send a message through Snapchat. It's a lot harder to talk to somebody face to face and gauge the emotional reactions that you're going to get.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I ask a question? So are you advocating for keeping them in the lockers or not having them on campus?
I think a first step is keeping them in the lockers.
Okay.
I think to that end, and it's a great question.
Yeah.
To that end, we have to also keep into perspective that the population that we're going to be working with right now, okay, we're really only talking about three-fourths of our population because our incoming freshmen have already been living with this at the junior high.
Right.
So it's going to be tough on the, on the sophomores and the juniors and the seniors, I think, in some respects. But I think that as a first step right now, I think that that's where, in compliance with this law, that we're comfortable kind of being able to execute, make it happen.
I, I fully understand that it's artificial in the sense of like the part I get is like the cell phone is part of the world. But I do think there's a place for us as adults to start thinking this way. And even just trying to come up with a cohesive late work policy with both kids and teachers, what I've found is the dramatic difference between an honors class and another class, a 12th grader and a 9th grader. Like, so you're asking teachers to try to balance a bunch of different situations based on the kid. And I think they're begging us for like a little bit more of a, just like, this is the policy. This is how we're going to handle it. This is the expectation, and class can return to some level of normal learning. And yeah, I get that it's not the world we're graduating them into, but we're right now doing another disservice, I think, by not putting some restriction on it.
So the state ban is on cell phones specifically. We already have a policy that covers personal communication devices more generally. Where are you on like smartwatches?
I, we, I personally would like to get rid of AirPods, like the earbuds, the smartwatches, and the cell phones, everything, because they're all the kind of the same distraction. We had this discussion, even in fourth quarter, we just ran like a little pilot program. Like, we get all the kids to take their, their earbuds out during like the transition. Of course, we have your handful of kids that just are going to fight on everything. So they wear their headphones around. Of course, but for the most part, it worked. And I think we run into a similar thing. I think we could make, I think we should include the smartwatches. I've heard, I didn't know that some are standalone versus some only work when you have the phone. So there's a lot of it I don't think I fully understand. But my number one thing is to try to get the teachers back to not being, having the kids with like the constant distraction. Because I am afraid of the, the has and have nots of this. If we ban something, then suddenly we have 800 smartwatches being purchased. That, that would be my worry.
Well, that was a comment that I got this weekend at one point when I'm trying to bring it up was, "Oh, we're going to have to get our smartwatch." And I, because you can text and you can, you can write text right on your little hand. So you, your concern about keeping the harassment going or the dialogue going can be accomplished on a Apple Watch.
When we're, when we're break, when I was brainstorming with Mr. Jop, because I think you were sort of hitting on how it would be enforced, we were running around trying to say like, "Oh, is that phone in your pocket?" And we were kind of, kind of leave it as, "A watch is a watch until we see you doing this." Then it's not. Like, so we were going to stay at the door and make sure everybody took off their smartwatches. But the minute a teacher teaches class and you're doing this, then, then I think that's a violation of the policy. And that's no longer just a watch, it's a community.
I mean, our current policy, the kids would not be permitted to be using smartwatches during class is, I mean, what happens with that?
I'll just return to what I said, that, I think it has become a, that's not quite how it's being enforced, so I'm not going to fight this battle. And I, I recognize that that sounds, but I don't know what to tell you other than the honest truth. And I think a more comprehensive restriction would help us.
Well, I don't think that we, I don't think that the smartwatches at this point, because we've allowed the cell phones, the cell phones are much more desirable than a smartwatch. So you don't have a huge amount of our population that has the smartwatches because we've allowed them to have the phones at this point. Now, you flip that, I think, to what Casey's saying. You flip that for a minute and say, "Okay, let's keep the phones in the locker." You may see a spike in the smartwatches, and I agree with Casey. I mean, it's going to be a watch. I have no interest in chasing down kids just because they're wearing a smartwatch or whatnot. But if the minute it ceases to become that and they're texting or they're doing what happens on, then that's what it'd be, that's what it becomes the disruption that we're trying to prevent.
I guess I'm struggling with the, the smartwatches are already not permitted to be used that way. And I, I know you're saying that not that many students have them, but what if they were? I, I mean, would it be enforceable if you said you have to have your, if you, you have to have your Bluetooth turned off? I mean, is that something that would be impossible to enforce? Like, once you, if you could see somebody, obviously if they're touching their watch, they're doing something, you know? It's a pretty visible action. Is it unenforceable if you, I mean, if somebody's sitting in class and they see a student going like this? There's...
No, that's enforceable.
Is it enforced?
I mean, you know, it's, it's a loaded question. I would say from a policy standpoint, yes. Do we go around and do I have every teacher fully engaged with 30 kids in the room? Like keyed in on that 100%? No, I'm, I'm sure that they're not. If it catches their eye and they say, "Hey, you can't do that," yeah, that's, that's how it's typically going to be addressed.
I'm just, I'm asking these questions because I know a lot of people like me, but I think a lot of students use their smartwatches as activity trackers. And, I mean, I like to keep track of the data that I can, you know, that I gain in that regard. And that wouldn't be something that students would be able to do.
I think if, I think if it becomes a distraction to the educational environment, if, if they have a smartwatch that's connected to their phone or a smartwatch that has its own cellular capability, if they're seen playing with it, what have you, or, or what may seem to be texting, then that's a distraction to the educational atmosphere. That's when it should be addressed. If, if it's a smartwatch that has any of those capabilities and they're just using it to track, you know, activity, et cetera, et cetera, and they're not spending a large amount of time focusing on it, it's, it's not going to be an issue in the classrooms. But that can be enforced right now, right? I mean, if a kid's playing on his watch in class... 100%. That, that's against the current policy. That could be a water bottle, that can be anything that becomes a, yeah, for sure.
I don't, I don't mean to play gaucho in this, so I'm just going to say exactly, I'm going to telegraph where I'm going with this and say, my, my question's going to be, why is there a policy that's different at the junior high? And I, I think the answer is, we're, I think we're overestimating the like the maturity level of the kids. And like, our policy has been different, but I guess I'm sitting here saying, is that part is fair? And like, there's a, there's a policy that's different for a 13-year-old than there is for a 14-year-old. And I'm not sure we all, like, for sure there are 12-year-olds that can handle it. For sure there are 18-year-olds who can't. And I think, I'm just flipping it around a little bit. We, we have two different policies already in school. And I think what, I guess I'm sitting here saying is, I'd like to try that policy where it's a little bit more strict and of course we're going to come vers, you know, I know what speed limit is on highways when they drive home. I see a lot of people that aren't following it, can't be enforced better? Sure, I mean, I, lots of things can be enforced better, but this gives us a way better baseline for the majority of classrooms, the majority of kids, the majority of teachers who are trying to do the right thing, which is learn while they're at school.
So I, I'm, let's let me try and understand. So I'm kind of struggling with that. Are we talking about just cell phones out in the lockers? Or are we talking about all cell phones, watches, earbuds, everything? Because the way I read the policy, a personal communication device is everything. So is that...
I want to speak for Martin. I want it to be everything. I just, we've kind of said in our side conversations, if we're not going to run around making sure that you're not running those watches, and the teacher was saw you doing this, it'd be, it'd be with our policy now. It's like, like right now, kid, kid does some quick check, nothing, basically nothing happened.
Right.
Unless that, it becomes like egregious and then the teacher's going to take their phone. But, but that has become such a fight.
Right. So you're saying...
More teeth to just say like, this is what, this is the board stance, this is the administration stance. There is no fight about this. We're still going to get some fight, but I think it helps a lot.
So you're saying at the very least, let's keep the cell phones in the lockers? Is that what you're saying?
I think the way that the policy, or at least the iteration that I had seen was that it should say all electronic devices. Now, having said that...
You're not going to go around and make sure every kid's taking their watch off?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
And the dead giveaway for a smartwatch, whether or not they're linked in with it, is going to be your AirPods or your earbuds. That's going to be the dead giveaway.
And I just want to make sure I understand what, I want to really understand because we have leeway in this policy where we can change it. And, you know, so I just want to make sure I know what we're putting in this and what you're asking.
I don't think AirPods are, I don't, I don't think they're covered by this policy.
No, they weren't covered by this policy.
Yeah, but they have to function with the personal communication.
Right.
They can't function without.
Right, right, but I, I just...
You just know they're plugged in.
Well, I mean, you could potentially have an electronic device that only played music like I had in 2003.
The iPod? For the Walkman.
And I don't, yeah, I don't think that would be a violation because these, under this policy, it has to be something that's capable of transmitting a communication.
I mean, I have an iPod Shuffle in my office now. And one of my teachers thought it was an antique.
It probably is.
They don't make those anymore.
Yeah.
It works.
I can't find the charger for mine, so...
I probably have one I can give you.
My mind, and I, my mind always goes to the, and I've mentioned this to Tammy as we've talked about it, the, the emergency situation. Because that's where I think a lot of parents go in this conversation is, and me as a parent, where I go. If there's an emergency, I think of the Parkland documentary where, you know, kids are talking to EMTs and leading people and telling people where they are. And I, I, there's this, this general, you know, I want to be able, if there's something that goes wrong, I want to be able to get in touch with my kids. I think that's a fear that parents have in this unprecedented time of school shootings. And, and nobody ever wants to plan for that. But I, I think that's a concern for me to at least have them in the locker. I mean, we all have, you're right, we all have different levels of maturity from ninth grade to 12th grade. And I'd like to think kids should be able to keep them on their person without using them. But I understand, I, I get kids, I know that's not always possible. But I do think that that's going to be a concern. We hear, you know, this emergency situation, I need to be able to have instant access to my child. And not emergency access for some parents, I think that'll be a, a clawback. But I, I don't expect you guys to have answers for that, but that, I just guess I wanted it. Those are some of the thoughts I'm having as I'm contemplating where we keep these phones is, you know, this whole emergency situation.
Can I ask a question? What, and I don't know the answer, I don't know, you do, right? Like, what is, what does the law exactly say?
As far as the emergency?
Well, as far as the personal communication devices.
The law says that...
They're allowed to be, go ahead.
Cell phones, starting January 1st, cell phones cannot be used by the student during the instructional day. It just says used, yeah. And it doesn't define instructional day.
So this policy allows us to either, you can, the one that, this policy that we've gotten from Neola gives us the option to have them, you can keep them in your possession in a locker or not on campus at all.
Right.
And some schools are doing like those yander bags. But we're not doing that. And I think, you know, we met as a policy committee and, you know, with administration and Melissa McDonald. And overwhelmingly, we were told that administration really wants to have, to, for the application of the policy wants them in the lockers and not on the person. And like I said, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, you know, I think as a board, and I want to speak for my colleagues, but I think I count on this, we want to be deferential because we understand that you are running those buildings and it's a challenge, right? And we understand that. So we're trying to find the right balance on, you know, what's the right way to do this, which is why we wanted you, you know, here tonight to, so that we could ask these questions that everybody's asking and just really try to figure this out.
Going back to the emergency situation or probably the most unfortunate situation that can happen in one of our school buildings and it happens. I know when the governor originally wanted, I think it was House Bill 2... I know when the governor originally wanted, I think it was House Bill 250, that each district had to have some type of cellphone policy, which we had, but we had a cellphone committee with administration, teachers. And we surveyed our high school parents specifically and a lot of the feedback was what you're saying, Kim. They wanted to be able to communicate with their student in that emergency situation. We brought that up and Mrs. McDonald can expand on this if she needs to, but we brought that up in a safety and security meeting. With law enforcement, EMTs, et cetera, in the room, they get it from a parent's perspective. They want to know if their kid's okay. But the last thing they want from the professional side of things in that situation are all the phone lines and no cellphone operations and things like that, being able to exist because there are thirteen hundred students potentially in a building trying to text or communicate with parents. I don't know if I expanded on that well enough, but that was pretty much the point from them. And I know we attempted to get them to this meeting and with a short notice we weren't able to, but it was pretty, it was pretty specific that was the direction they wanted to go.
And, and truthfully, in the Parkland situation, so many calls were coming out from the school that the nine-one-one operators were ultimately directing them to different agencies. So it was kind of, it was kind of chaotic and they had different agencies coming in. And, and so it was hard to manage that from, but yeah, I mean, so.
But I get it from a parent's perspective. I want to be able to send that text in.
Are you okay?
But that's where the chaotic situation becomes less communicative because of that, the cell phones tied up.
So it causes an additional problem with everybody calling.
And for safety services specifically.
Right. It slows down the getting of help.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're thinking everything through. And I, you know, Mark hit on something that I also think is, you know, a lot of kids hide behind their cell phones right now. You know, that's, it's easier to scroll on my phone than to.
Interact with you.
Interact with me. And I, I do feel like that's something that we could maybe change if we take that away from them. How is enforcement going to go though? Are you, I, I just feel like it's going to be a nightmare at first. I mean, are we going to be like, all right? I mean, it's going to have to be swift and serious at, at the beginning or it's going to have no teeth.
So here's what I would say, and a lot of teachers, and there are teachers in the room as well, and maybe some of you have heard, there's a book out there, Dr. Vogt, you may be fully aware of, that is called, something along the lines of Don't Smile Until October. And it's all about basically your classroom management and how you set the tone and set the pace. And, and the kids will adapt. Kids, I mean, people in and of themselves are very adaptable. And it's going to be tough at the start. I, I don't disagree with you. It's going to be tough, it's going to be a change, it's going to be a shift. And we're going to meet some resistance. And, I mean, spoiler alert on that, a lot of our kids, similar to like Jurassic Park and the velociraptors, they're going to adapt. I mean, they're going to figure out different ways to try and bamboozle us and, and try and weasel us through it. And we get that, that's, that's a part of the doing business. So I agree with you though, but I think we're up to it. I think, I think we're going to get great teacher support. And, and truth be told is, I think at the end of the day, I think from a majority standpoint, I think they will probably also have a lot of parent support for this.
The statute, the legislation allows, it requires districts to allow students to use phones if they have a doctor's note saying that they need to use phones. How are you planning to deal with that? Are you expecting a lot of those types of requests to come in?
So it depends. Are you, are you talking about a student, like a medical note that would say, hey, my child needs like this for an accommodation for a 504? That kind of thing?
No, it says. So my guess would be it pertains to kids who are diabetic, who use the apps on their phone.
Our school nurse has a roster of those kids. Like, we maintain those records, so that, that has never been an issue of disruption.
It says, "A district board shall permit a student to use a cellular telephone or other electronic device to monitor or address a health concern if the board receives a written statement from the student's physician requiring such use." So I think it could be broader than that.
Well, so I mean, if you've got a kid that has to pick their blood shooter, just to use that as the example, and that's done by their phone. We have a roster of those kids, we typically will notify those kids, they get a power school to do it as well. So that any teacher that works with that student knows that that's going to be a part of their need in the building.
Candidly, my concern is more that you're going to get notes from physicians saying that students need to have access to their phones for their mental health. I, I mean, that's, that's how I interpret this is opening the door for, and I don't know how you, how you address that.
I think we need to be prepared for that eventuality.
I mean, if they do, then that would, we typically channel those through the 504 process. That, that's, it's an accommodation that a student would need. And so we have a process for that, we have an IEP process that we follow for that.
And, and in the legislation, this particular provision is separate from the language that speaks about the IEP process? So I think it's in addition to that? I, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm just reading it, but I'm not trying to set my own expectations, but I think that that's something you need to be prepared for.
Because it's separate, it says medical reasons, which is really broad and really vague. And, you know, in the employment law realm, we've seen this with employees who get notes to have special, and it's in housing, everything, I have to have a dog type thing. So I think it's something we're going to have to keep an eye out on, is just vague medical reasons. And we need to have a plan in place for, okay, what's going to, what's going to happen when these medical requests come in? How are we going to scrutinize them? Because we've gotten no guidance from what's medical reason.
I'm not even sure they have to provide a reason.
Right. In the statute, it's very vague. It's not a great law.
I, I would assume if there's a medical reason, that a student would have to have a doctor's note that would be on file with the school.
Yes.
That they could get one.
But doctor, doctors will.
I mean, they shouldn't, right? I mean, doctors shouldn't prescribe something that's not needed, right? I mean, that's on their, that's on their license, right?
Yes.
So I, I find it hard to believe three hundred kids are going to go get a note from a doctor saying they need it for anxiety.
Not three hundred, but.
I think it'll be five hundred.
I think it'll be several, and I think you would be surprised at what doctors will.
I think it will happen. I, I'm not, not at the, not at the three hundred level, no, but I do think it will happen. They'll get tested.
I think it'll happen.
I think it will happen, absolutely. I think one of the things we can give some consideration to though, I think we'll see a lot more upfront, especially as this law transitions. But in year two, when you have two great levels that will then become, have become accustomed to not having the phone, I think as it goes on, I think it will phase out for those kids who truly need it versus those kids who are perhaps.
Can't do without it.
And I'm getting a doctor's written response from a doctor asking for a totally different reason because I've had it for three of my four years in high school. I'm going to the doctor, but by the time I'm in tenth grade and I haven't had it for two years, I do think over time it will get easier and there will be less.
I'm sure that's true.
It's just the painful conduit to go through, it will be painful upfront. And I do think, going on the record, I do think we'll have a lot of parents who seek a medical support or of some nature, written response that says depression, anxiety, a combination of both, autism, whatever. They may go to the doctor and say, this will be a, they need this to get through the school day. It's their coping tool, just like a support animal. We're going to have to think about what that looks like. I think it will be fast and furious this year. For some kids, it is a tremendous change, and I'll go a step further, for some parents, it is a tremendous change. But I think over time, it will get better because it will be the new normal. We just have to get through the next three years to get through. Absolutely, absolutely. But you're right, the law does not say that if a doctor comes in with a prescription, and I know I'm one of the older ones in the room, but it used to be someone would, a doctor would write a prescription, you need an IEP. You know, Veronica Motley needs an IEP, here you go. Well, funny now, that's why we have laws that say against that. But that law is not explicit in this particular statute. It specifically says.
Yeah, I don't think this law requires them to go through the IEP process for this.
But it wouldn't, I, I agree. But I would say just how districts in the past have had to respond to an overwhelming influx of something, it doesn't say that in a year, someone will say, we need to look at that written response differently. Because I know it's a school district, at one time, you could get a report or a doctor's note saying, my kid needs an IEP, and the district would respond and say, we'll put him on an IEP. Then there were processes and model guidelines and model policies that were put in place from ODE that said, you can't do that anymore, you have to go through a policy or a practice or a protocol. And the one thing that I did read in the statute, I do believe, is that the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce is supposed to develop a model policy. Unfortunately, I don't think it's expected until December. Which, we're having this discussion now and the desire of our high school folks and really as a district, one of the reasons we're having this emergency meeting tonight, or special meeting, oh, did they strike that one? Of course they did. Oh, right, they did. That would have made sense, yeah, they were going to give us model guidance, now they're not. But I also think the purpose why we're holding this special meeting is because we have a desire to start this policy prior to January. We would like to start August nineteenth, which is exactly fifteen days away if my math is right. And so hence why we are meeting tonight to have a discussion, to hear from our educators and our families and to see what our next steps would be for the board to consider. Because that's why we have a meeting to have a first read. We want to hear, we want to learn, we need to talk about our considerations. But I do want to make it known, it is a desire to start this school year, first day of school, with a policy in place. That's been asked.
And, and I would say I am fully in agreement with starting it before the school year. I think making that transition in January would be very disruptive and more difficult. So I understand the desire to start it now, which is, you know, why we're here to, to talk about it. And I think it's, you know, I don't know where my colleagues are on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, if it's something we're going to do, I, I do think doing it at the beginning of the school year is going to be a lot easier than to try and start it in January. I mean, I think it could be done if that's what we decided to do. But do we have another meeting for a second read?
We do, yes. That's why we threw this in, because we have one more, so. And I already know you were okay with, you're still okay with.
I am more than okay.
More than okay, believe me. So I think collectively, it sounds like we agree, we should start, we should try to.
Beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the year. So then, then the question becomes, is it an in the locker? Or it can be on the person? Like that's, I think there was a few things we really need to drill down to, other than when do we start it? So it's locker or on person? I understand from our administrators, they want it in the locker, so, but we pass the policy, so where are we on that?
And also definition of instructional day.
Yeah, well, let's get back to that. Let's try locker. I think those are the things we have to pin down. And then lunchtime, in between classes, that's.
I am, I'm good within the locker. I'm hearing, I'm hearing what, you know, what Casey and Mark have said and how it will, it will really free up teachers from having to deal with that. I, I'm, I'm fine within the locker. I kind of sway a little bit in the lunch period.
We're going to do that one next.
Okay.
So these one at a time.
I just, I don't know.
So we're good with locker? And Dan, you and I at policy committee, are you still in the same place we both thought in the locker or what?
Yes, no, I think that the locker's the, the right solution. I think that obviously kids will find ways to put them in pockets or handbags or whatever.
Of course.
But that, to me, using that as an excuse to not pass the policy, that kids are going to find ways around it, is an argument for anarchy. The, like, laws work, policies work, and I think what we're doing is we're making a statement. That there's values embedded in this policy. And one of those values is education requires focused time. And, and to do that, you need to remove distraction.
I agree.
And, and so I think that that's what this policy is trying to do.
Great, great.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I'm, I'm good with them being in lockers.
Locker, Tammy?
I'm good with locker for phones. I'm still thinking about my position on the, the watches.
So I think we probably should talk about the watches because that is something in here. Where are we on the smartwatches?
I mean, I think I'm fine with them being on as long as they're not being, I mean, you're looking at, checking your heart rate or your, the time beyond that, I think it's a privileged situation. The first time someone gets caught texting on their, or checking the internet on their phone.
I don't have one.
Then it should be, I think they should lose the privilege for the year, like, I mean, it needs to be extreme. Like, you get one chance to.
And I think that that's, when we talked about this in policy committee, Tim, you said it was, you know, we're going to allow the smartwatches if they don't have cellular capability.
Yeah, that was the initial language that the high school folks and I kind of came up with is, you know, if they didn't have cellular capability.
If they didn't, so.
Yeah, but the highest doesn't say that.
So, and that goes back to that, is it, is it a disruption? Are they, are they on it during class? And then that's where. Texting on a watch is really cumbersome. And the reason why, I'm guessing.
Not if you're fifteen, not if you're fifteen. Listen, it's cumbersome for me to text on this, I got to keep going backwards, but.
It's still not as convenient as a phone. And so I'm going to guess, you probably currently aren't having, and, and this is the assumption. But I'm guessing you're not having a, a ton of problems with people texting on watches because those are the kids that are using their phones. So I think you're right, there are, there will be some people that are migrating to their watches that are not using them now. But it's, it's very easy to, to see if somebody's on their watch.
I'd say that's going to be a lot more obvious, because someone's trying to text on their watch as opposed to a phone.
I think so.
I mean, you can do it audio, which is the thing that's going to be the easiest.
And I, and I don't know if you can say this, I mean, I heard you, Casey. And I, and by the way, I tend to agree with you, like, watches gone, you know, the have and have nots. Because, you know, some families are going to be able to say, I'm going to buy you a watch, and others can't. But I also think, like, this is a big change. And I think where I'm sort of falling is like in the middle, like, okay, let's leave it how, okay, you know, watch, what if you get caught? And if we find, if you find, like, after this year, it's a big issue, we can revisit it and say, okay, the watch, it's out of control. Like, now that's your new problem, and then maybe we, you know, we make adjustments from there.
Yeah, I mean, they're still not supposed to be used.
They're not, right?
Correct.
And neither are phones, like in class.
So do we have to make revisions to the definition of a personal communication device? Because the way I read it right now, watches and phones are the same thing. So phones have, so if a, if a personal communication device has to be in a locker, that means a watch too?
No, I think it's specified in here. It's, if we didn't take out watch, like, I think it was specified.
We'll have to change it.
Yeah, like where.
It's just under the definition of personal communication.
Yeah. So if, if a policy is going to be, personal communication, personal communication devices need to be in lockers, right now that includes watches.
Right.
Correct.
So I guess that's my point is.
So we may need to add a sentence that says, students can wear watches provided that they're not using them as personal communication devices or something.
Right. So we modify it in that fashion.
I could just interject for just a moment.
Yes, please do.
I know that one of the things, you know, that this law was kind of concerned about is, is kind of the management, the adaptation of things that are going on and the exceptions, the notes that we would be getting. I would caution us a little bit because if we start carving out things now, it's going to lead us to now a different exception, and a different one, and a fifth bit of this, of that.
So do you want to?
Whatever new that they come up with. And it may be easier for us to start bold and then roll it back if we think, I mean, if you've got kids that suddenly now need to monitor their biometrics or something like that because of what they need, the watch. It's a lot easier, I think, to apply it broadly speaking to start and then carve out the exceptions without starting with the exceptions.
So you're asking us to leave smartwatch as a personal communication device and they need to be in the locker?
I think so because it is going to be, because by carving out the exception, you're now paving a way for exceptions. Rather than saying electronic communication devices and everything under that umbrella.
But if we have a policy, but you've already said you're not going to take, make kids take their watches off. So if we have a policy that you're already planning on not enforcing, how is that?
Well, once again, I mean, this goes back to policy and the rule of the law and your execution of it. We all, as parents, come up with a broad rule for what's going to happen. What we're going to be doing, what are the consequences going to be? But periodically though, we've got to readjust that based on how the circumstances roll out.
But with all due respect, our policy has always been, don't use your phone during class. And you're telling us you need a stronger one so that kids can't, teachers don't have to enforce that. And so I, I guess I don't understand, either we say no smartwatches, I mean, I get what you're saying. You want us to just pass a law and then you guys enforce it.
It's a great example, Kim. What I would say in response to that is, is that yes, we've said, you can't use your phones. But the intent behind that rule has been that we don't want the disruption. So if I've got kids, for example. So if I've got kids, for example, that are doing photojournalism, and they're using their phones to take pictures as a part of that assignment, that's not a disruption, and thus we've allowed that to happen. Because we have the policy in place, but the intent is what matters.
So what if I, if I'm correct, what I hear you saying is, you want us to leave the smartwatches as part of the personal, the definition of personal communication devices, ban them, like, they should be in the locker, but your application of that is gonna be, like, you know, I have a watch on, you're not gonna come and check and see it, but if you see me on it, you're gonna be like, you're violating the policy, put it in the locker.
Correct.
But otherwise, you're just gonna leave it alone. Is that what I hear you saying?
The same way that we would assume, that if we set up the policy that all the phones are in the lockers, that they're in the lockers. Now, does that mean that I'm gonna be looking at kids' pockets? No.
But if you see me.
But if I see you with it, then yes, I'm gonna have to intercede.
And I think what I hear you saying, another way of putting it, is, we're really looking at behavior, not the device. If someone uses, we know that we were saying no cellphones, and we see someone walking down the hall doing their cellphone, or we hear a buzz in the classroom, and, and then they go to their watch to respond, that's the behavior. Responding to the watch, is what I hear you saying. And the consequence to what you were saying, Mr. Zerof, earlier, is if we see that smartwatch becoming a distraction to instruction, then we would administer, like, hey, do I see you doing something with, stop it. That's the first one. The second time, now it's a problem, because you're now insubordinate of the policy.
Correct.
However, if we're using it to track our steps, or I'm using it for, um, to tell me to stand up, or my activity levels, or whatever, but I'm just tapping it to make a stop and go away, I'm still paying attention, but it's different than going, I will see you, wait, I will see you later, or whatever, or, okay. That's what, is that more clear?
Yes.
I guess I'm not entirely comfortable with the concept of passing a policy that we don't think is going to be enforced. I mean, I, you know, we write these, spend a lot of time reading these, writing these, going through these, having these meetings, and I, my expectation is if we pass a policy, it's enforced.
I think it's inaccurate to say that it wouldn't be, quote unquote, enforced. What we're talking about, though, is working with human beings, and it's an imperfect science. We come up with rules, we come up with policies, to Dr. Boden's point, you know, we come up with these things, and then we try and execute them with fidelity. But at the end of the day, we're dealing with human beings as well.
Well, and I think you need the discretion, and I think that's what you're asking for. But to Tammy's point, we need to write a clear policy, so that parents and students know what the rules are. And, and I think that we can find language that is both clear, but also provides enough discretion, so that we don't have to look at people's cellphone bills when they walk in the door and say, is that a watch that has, you know, can make a phone call, or is that just a Fitbit? Or whatever, right? And I, and I.
I, and I think this, it was something I was gonna raise, we hadn't even gotten this far, but I had some drafting concerns about the policy, and one of them is that the, the legislation actually requires us to specify, um, the disciplinary, the consequences. And our current version doesn't do that, because I think, um, it was Dr. Motley's intent, or the Policy Committee's intent, to refer to a general, what, progressive disciplinary process. But I think we actually have to specify it in the policy, so we need to say what happens when there are violations, and, um, and I guess I wanted some input on what that should be, but also, I'm concerned about selective enforcement, um, if it's more of a, when we view it as an issue, that's when enforcement begins.
And that is a good point. When we met with the Policy Committee, I, I totally own this, because historically, we do not put consequences in board policy. It's part of our code of conduct, our handbook, um, for things such as if you're late to class, or if we're fighting. There's some other areas, even we have tran-, we have discretion over. But this law, by the statute, thank you, Tammy, for providing it, specifically says, the policy shall, does not say may, specify any disciplinary measures that will be taken for violations of this prohibition. And that's unusual language, because that's typically what a code of conduct is for.
Does the Neola policy have it in here?
Can we just, can we just refer back to the code of conduct?
The draft did, and we struck through it, where it talks about, um, I'm sorry, didn't mean to ignore you, I'm trying to answer too many questions, but the draft policy does say, for example, um, suggestions for, I think it's on page two, it talks about a verbal warning, and require the student to store it in accordance with the policy, confiscate the PCD, um, and have it, take it back to the locker. I mean, it's progressive.
I, I have the consequences that the high school administration shared with me, that would be added to the handbook, it could be simply added to the policy as well.
And what would that be?
Uh, it's from offense one through five. First offense, electronic device confiscated and warning. Second offense, confiscated, level one detention, parent guard unnotified. Third offense, two-hour detention, parent guard unnotified. Fourth offense, these are all being confiscated, level three detention, which is three hours, parent being notified. Fifth offense and beyond progressive discipline, which may include out-of-school suspension, that becomes a failure to comply piece.
Can, can the policy just refer back to the handbook, saying, you know, consequences will be as defined.
That's what we're trying.
Or it has to be put in.
That's why it's so unusual. Usually, in our code of conduct, it's never in board policy.
And I also kinda wanna go back to the, you know, the definition of the policy. I, you know, I understand what everybody's saying, but I, my opinion is, they can't enforce something that's not a policy. So, like, if we keep the, if we keep the smartwatches in there, then yes, they might not go to every single student, say, take that watch off, take that watch off, but if a student is misusing it and causing a disruption, then they have the policy to fall back on to say, okay, now we can, we have enforcement. If it's not in there, then they can't do that.
But the current, the current policy already says that they can't use smartwatches during class. I'm gonna have to think about that one.
The smartwatches?
I mean, is that something that's being enforced at the schools right now? If it's in our current policy?
When you say enforced, are you saying, I guess, let me clarify your question. When you say enforced, are you playing out a scenario in which a kid comes walking in, like, Mr. Zerof has a smartwatch right now, comes into a classroom, that an adult intercedes and says, that is a smartwatch, you need to get it out of here?
My thought.
Or are you saying that?
If a kid's sitting here doing this during class, then it's, then it's being enforced.
Then, yes, it would be addressed.
Okay.
Because it would be a disruption. It would, it would be a distraction.
Yeah.
It would interfere with the progression of instruction.
Yeah. And I go back to your, you know, I think you made a, made a example about speed limits. Like, if someone's driving five miles over the speed limit, a police officer's not gonna pull them over. If someone's driving twenty miles an hour over the speed limit, they're probably gonna get pulled over. So it's, it's when it gets excessive and gets to be a big problem, is when things, but if we don't have the rule, we can't enforce it. But we already do, so.
And I think the concern is, once cellphones are placed in lockers, will that behavior of using more watches replaced, because they don't have the cellphone? You've removed the cellphone, it's in the locker, now you're gonna see more watches that are potentially doing this, and they want to have the opportunity to address if this becomes a distraction, 'cause it'll be a replacement technology.
And I think they should have the ability to enforce that.
I, I know in conversation with our legal, and I think it goes back to what Dr. Venn says, you know, teachers are the ones who have to, they have to be the bad guys with any policy, or specifically this one, in classrooms. Teachers' unions are really, really, in the state of Ohio, based on this new law, are really in support of the yonder bags. I'm not recommending yonder bags for numerous reasons. The first probably just being the, the fiscal responsibility it throws on the district. But as black and white as we can make this policy, going back to what we're all talking about, whether it be phones for sure, it sounds like, or, or smartwatches in a locker, it makes it more clear for those teachers specifically to handle, you know, the disciplinary issues and the consequences that take place. Um, you know, it just kinda goes back to what, like I said, what Casey said about, you know, the teachers are the ones who are gonna, you know, we're talking to administration about enforcing it, sure, they can do it, but it ultimately falls on those classroom teachers, day in and day out, coming in the rooms. And I just think it makes it, it simplifies it for them, if they're not supposed to be in there at all.
So I'm not sure that we have a consensus on the smartwatch. But we kinda have to figure out how to move forward, so we can get to the second read.
So the proposal is whether we just keep smartwatches bulked in with everything, and, I mean, that seems to be the simplest. I'm, I would be fine with just leaving it all as is in here. I don't know.
Tammy, where do you wanna go to instructional day and come back to this?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, let's move to instructional day. Like, so, and, I think the proposal is, you want us to see that as first bell to last bell, which would include lunch, and I will say, you did raise.
And hallways.
And hallways.
Study halls.
Study halls, that the cellphone, the personal communication device is in the locker, the locker's closed, you can get it out at the end, understanding they might check it in between classes to get their remind, or whatever. And I, I will say you raised, like, you know, 'cause I was really kinda like, I don't care if they have it at lunch, like, that's their time, but you did raise a good point, like, lunch, and then do we have to define where is lunch? You can only have it if you're in lunch in the cafeteria, but not in the bandroom, or the choir room, or the, you know, wherever. So, so I think, like, that's the next question, like, are we, and I think what it really comes down to is lunchtime and hallways. Where are we on that? Greg.
I mean, for me personally, I wouldn't mind them having it at lunch, but I also don't wanna make a nightmare of enforcement to the administration, so I'd probably lean towards bell to bell.
Bell to bell.
I mean, I'm kinda the same way. I kinda, I, I, I think regardless of where lunch is, whether it's in the cafeteria, or in the bandroom, or the media center, wherever a kid's eating, I don't have a problem with a student checking their cellphones, but I'm hearing what I'm hearing, and I get, I don't know, it, it, would it be, it, it goes to more than just kids being distracted from learning, it goes to the whole idea of the behavior issues, and, uh, I think what you're trying to accomplish, Casey, is to take that tool away, as far as harassing and planning fights, and.
Vapes and.
Vapes and.
Snapchatting.
The distraction doesn't have to happen immediately. The distraction can be, I'll see you fifth period.
Right. And then I just feel like there's seventy-five percent of the population suffering for, and I shouldn't say suffer, suffering.
Doing without.
Right.
Being punished.
I, I know.
No, I get it, like, right. I, I get it.
My charge when I walked out of the house tonight from my child was, fight the power, ma. And yes, that was Claire.
And did you say, I am the power?
I'm like, I don't know what the power is, Claire.
Don't watch the meeting, Claire. And I think, you know.
Remember who the enemy is.
Yeah. I think at Policy Committee.
Hunger Games. When you're in the arena.
It was, it was very Hunger Games. Dan and I, I think at the meeting, we were, at the Policy Committee meeting, we both said, okay, bell to bell, and then I sorta was wavering on that, kinda like, let them have it at lunch. But I, I think you swayed me right back, like, I think those were very, you know, powerful, I mean, it, it was persuasive, like, I, I see what you're trying to do, and I wanna be supportive of that.
And believe, I don't wanna come across as just, I'm part of the community, too. I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just trying to be realistic about the situations we're dealing with at the school, and the, this, the bell to bell makes it the clearest, but I totally get why we're fascinating. I think this is something we, we don't wanna be jerks, we wanna give our kids that, that thing that they want, and it's gonna, it's going to make it tougher. Mr. Joplin and I have talked about, if this is the compromise, or say whatever you want, this is the, like, the one thing I guess we'd be okay with, and just kinda make it, I think somebody used the word nightmare, Mr. Feller, it's good.
And I don't think we wanna give you a nightmare. And I think, I think it's safe to say that, you know, the board knows that you're, that you and, you know, Mark are being very thoughtful, and you're trying to do what's best for all of your students, in your buildings, in your teachers, in your staff, like, we know that, like, we get that, you know, even if we sometimes disagree with you. We do, we do get that. Okay, Tammy?
I'm, I'm okay with covering bell to bell.
Bell to bell? Okay. So then we're bell to bell, in the lockers, and we're, I, I agree with you, like, we leave, the language is more simple to leave him like it is. Tammy?
Pardon me?
On the.
On the watches?
On the smartwatch.
So my concern with the smartwatches is, the way it's being explained, you know, nothing's gonna happen unless somebody's actually using it, which is kind of already the policy. But then I worry that, you know, some people are gonna get enforced, and some people aren't, because, you know, not everybody gets caught, and, um, I don't know.
You're not inaccurate. You're not, just to go back to Mr. Feller speeding a lot, I mean, or example, you know, I mean, the person ahead of me maybe gets caught, or the person behind me maybe gets caught, and I don't get caught, or I get caught, and.
That's 'cause you're not speeding, Mr. Pew.
But I know, I'm gonna have to stop it, I mean, I gotta slow it down.
But you're not having them all put their lock, watches in their lockers, I think you're saying, so, then basically, it's the current policy, and that's why I'm struggling with carving it out.
I think that they're basically kinda saying that about phones, too, like, they're not gonna say, I, what's that square, is that rectangle in your pocket? But if it comes out, I mean, that's kinda what I hear you saying, like, they're not gonna walk around going, what, what is that?
But a watch is more visible.
Yes, but they're saying, because if the watch is monitoring your activity, or whatever, it's if you're using it, the same as if my, my watch is up, or my phone's in my pocket, if I pull it out, now I have a problem, because now I'm legally violating, right?
Right.
I mean, that's kinda what I'm hearing. And giving them that policy gives them the teeth that they don't have right now.
But the ban is on possession, so, possession of the, the electronic device. So, if you've, you've got a phone in your pocket, that's obviously, that's a violation, may or may not get detected. If somebody's wearing a watch, you're gonna see it, you know? So it just seems like it opens up more possibility for.
So, so.
In selective enforcement.
So do we say, smartwatch in the locker, can't have it?
And I don't like doing that to kids, so that's what I'm struggling with.
That would be, yeah, and I know you're struggling with that, that's why.
My daughter doesn't have a smart, smartwatch, just to be, she might ask for one for Christmas after this.
Listen, I think, I think they'd be very happy with us if we said, smartwatches, all, you know, personal communication devices in the locker. And I'm comfortable with doing that, because I agree with you, um, I mean, I don't see the difference, if I see it, I think you have it, and you're violating the policy.
Yeah.
So, all PCDs in the locker, you cannot be wearing it? You wanna come back to that, Tammy?
I mean, I'm okay with that, if that's, if that's.
If that's the policy.
What's gonna happen, if, if that's actually what's gonna happen, though.
And that's what we would do.
'Cause I guess that's what we're saying to you, like, if we pass a policy.
And that's what the, we do in the first week of school, and I think they do it in Satie's, oh, we have class meetings with all of our classes, freshman meetings, sophomore meetings, et cetera, et cetera, and that would be part of the discussion. That we'd be looking at this policy, and say, this is what the expectation is.
And here's what happens if we see you with a smartwatch on.
This is what's gonna happen. And a lot of that is what we do every day, right? It's, it's having conversations with kids, explaining them what the expectations are, what the, what the consequences will be, and then following through when they're violating it.
Right. Kim's going to be in a lot of trouble when she gets home, got worse.
I'm just going to say, I got COVID.
I don't, I don't like, I understand the, I think it's unrealistic-
I do too.
To ban smartwatches. And I think that it's not, I, I think it goes beyond the intent of the legislation.
It does.
And I don't think that that's necessary. I, in 2025, nobody's going to go buy a, a G-Shock watch or a Swatch or an Anlog watch. My, most of my kids can't even read an Anlog clock. I know, it's a failure of parenting.
Yikes.
They, they can, they just don't like it.
Right.
And I mean, that is-
And so, like, go, go try and find a watch that's not, doesn't have some smart compatibility. It's like using a computer program that doesn't have some form of AI. Like, it's there, whether you want to admit it or not, it's there. And so I, I just think-
I don't think we should touch smartwatches until it, until we have to. I mean, I think that the original plan of not using them as personal communication devices-
Then if it becomes an issue, we can-
And if we can't-
Readdress.
If we can't rein that in, then we adjust, but I, I think-
You can always read that, though.
I, I think it's just too much to make kids take their watches off, too.
Which is, yeah, I mean-
Particularly as they're probably used to checking time on their phones as opposed to clocks.
Right, that's going to be their only time.
So then what if the changes to say, smartwatches may be worn but not used, something to that effect?
I, I think that-
What if they change the definition too?
I mean, I, I kind of understand the idea of just leaving it as is because as soon, you know, as soon as somebody starts using it as a personal communication device, it goes-
To a different level.
We can say that, I mean, we can put in the policy that they can't be, what is it, cellphone, any of my, what's the terminology?
What was the language you had, Tim?
It's in the definition.
Maybe the Bluetooth needs to be turned off.
Yeah.
The definition is-
Cellular communication.
Yes. Transmitting communication, um, it says, a PCD is an electronic communication device powered by batteries or electricity that are capable of receiving, transmitting, or receiving and transmitting communication between individuals or groups that are not issued by the district for the purpose of instruction. Examples include computers, laptops, tablets, e-readers, cellular phones, smartphones, gaming devices, smartwatches, and other wearable technology, and other web-enabled devices used to communicate.
And I think that language always already needs some tweaking because there's some students who use, um, computers. You use their own Chromebooks, for example, and opt out of our Chromebook program. And under that policy, they're, using your own computer would be banned. So there's already something we need to work with over there.
Um, I mean, I, I don't necessarily think, even if, even if a smartwatch doesn't have its own account, it's not a separate-
Cellular capability.
Cellular capability. If you're close enough to your phone, it just, it works. And I mean, I can get around my neighborhood and still, it has a pretty good reach. I was very surprised by the reach it had. And, and so I think it'll vary to different degrees throughout the building and in Southview, it may not work at all.
And in media center, no doubt.
But I, I, I think trying to differentiate between whether or not it's got that separate cellular capability is just going to be a, a nightmare.
Yeah, that's, it's very tricky.
I, I think that we should be able to look at the language and try to carve out, you know, a, a smartwatch becomes a personal communication device when you're using it to communicate. When you're using it for anything other than-
Telling time.
Telling time.
Monitoring stuff.
I mean, your blood sugar, these things do a lot of things, heart rate.
EK cheese.
You know, all that kind of stuff.
Health-related.
Right.
Right.
So I-
If it becomes a disruption, even if you're checking your heart rate every, every 10 seconds and focusing on your, on your watch instead of what the teacher's trying to communicate, that, that's a disruption, I mean, that's where it's addressed.
Are they using it to communicate with each other? Or are they using it for other reasons?
And that's when it's the behavior-
Maybe we just look at the language and try to-
Capture that.
Find some ways to capture that sentiment.
Well, and it really is, again, it goes back to the behavior, that's how the device is being used and you're giving a consequence for the behavior. If they're using it to text or using it to whatever, then it's different. But just to wear it and say you're monitoring your steps-
Steps, yeah.
It's monitoring, it's no more than a Fitbit. But you could also find people on it. So if I'm looking for my friend or whatever, or see where I'm at, that might, that's a distraction in the class, then you should be focusing on the teacher. Okay, so we also need to revise, which we spoke about, in regards to school-issue devices because we do have students who may bring their own MacBook, Airbook, or what have you, iPad. We would need to make sure we change that language as well.
And then we're adding the, um-
The MacBooks can get taxed.
The discipline.
Yes, so we'll drop that in. And what I will do, Tim and I can connect tomorrow along with Melissa and the principals to make sure it accurately reflects what we've heard. Just to review, what I'm hearing right now is in our Savannah schools, instructional day means first bell to last bell.
Yes.
Um, currently, they will not be able to use them in the lunchroom or during lunch periods or in the hallways, but we anticipate that in their, they have five minutes between classes, four, four. If they check it while it's in their locker in between classes and they have time to do that, that's fine, but-
We're, we're not putting that in the policy, though.
No.
Okay.
This is just so how we keep in mind when we crap the language, we want to be clear what it is and what it isn't. For my, that's the way my brain works. Right now, smartwatches, I'm hearing, do not monitor stuffs. We are not putting smartwatches in lockers, is what I last heard. Correct?
Correct. But they should remain subject to the existing, the existing policy, which-
They cannot be used.
Yeah, can't be used.
So possession of smartwatches is fine, provided that they're not being used as a personal communication device?
Did we talk about career tech students, how, what are they going to do if they're off campus?
Like traveling between the lines.
Traveling between or going to their-
Both, actually, I have questions on both.
All we have discussed so far is that we would have lockers here for the those who kids were coming over. And I have, uh, like, I'm just defaulting or the second policy is, I guess, if they're within.
Okay, because this is just, it speaks to the instructional day, so we probably need to spell something out that if they're off campus, it doesn't apply.
Or just not say that, or just say nothing?
Yeah.
So if you're interning at a law firm, you follow the rules of the law firm?
Can't enforce this rule there.
Because we can't enforce it, we won't know anyway if they're off campus.
Well, if we're not requiring them to keep the phone here when they go.
Well, I don't think that.
We wouldn't.
Okay.
We wouldn't. And I have more think time on that as well because we wouldn't know if they were using it during the school day. If they're working in a law office or at Farrar and Finch or any, at a bank, we're not going to know if they're texting and it's their lunch period or not, we're not going to know. So we won't be able to monitor that. So thank you.
You got anything else, Sammy?
I'm checking, I had, I sent Veronica a long list earlier today, but she, she went through a lot of them with me already.
And currently, one of the questions you've had, students are not permitted to carry backpacks during the school day, but they do have stray bags, correct? Okay.
That was when I was thinking about it in terms of whether they would have the phones on their-
Person.
Permitted to have them on their person and backpacks seemed more secure if, if they were going to carry them on their person. Having them zipped away in a backpack seems more secure than a cinch sack or something, but it doesn't matter now.
Do they do students like, your obligation?
Do we know how other districts are interpreting the instructional day?
I know that, Casey, you did speak to some other districts and what they were doing. I know Rosford is going with yonder bags.
Mommy has a policy like we're talking about, like, we're, they're very similar from what I've gathered.
Bell to bell.
They're working on the discipline, including parents coming to pick up the phone, which I don't remember. Unlike, unlike the fourth, that's the fifth. Uh, I believe Washington locals going that direction.
The parent picking up the phone?
No, sorry, sorry. Like a bell to bell ban.
Are they doing yonder bags also at Washington Local?
TPS is-
Not last I knew, TPS and Rosford, I think that was. I spoke to Harrisburg, Anthony Wayne, and Boyd Green, who all indicated they were like holding back as a way to see definitions. But possibly leaning towards, like, maintaining the current policy. And then maybe addressing it at January 1st. I think that was two weeks ago when this first came across. So I don't know if those districts have made progress since that or changed the course.
They may be waiting a while, I, I don't think there's a good definition of it anywhere.
Specifically, Anthony Wayne, and I think Perry Brooks both said, like you said, there's no definition of instructional day.
And it's interesting because the legislation also uses the term school day in the same-
Sure does.
Same bill.
They're so great.
They literally.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Um, I-
Go ahead.
Okay. A quick question, just one. So I, it says, the first paragraph, we are, it's going to be a double negative. We are not prohibiting them during school-related events and functions, like sporting events after school, right? We're not prohibiting them during that time.
Instructional day.
And sharp bell.
Yeah. But then later, um, there's that list, A, B, C, D, E.
Exactly what I was supposed to talk about.
It says, it says, we're specifically allowing it. So like, do we need to say we're specifically allowing it if we're not prohibiting it? It just seemed weird to me.
Well, E, I think, um-
It says as authorized by-
I think that parentheses in E, the EG, after-school activities, extracurricular activities should be removed because we're already not covering after-school activities and extracurricular activities. And I think E just allows, if a teacher should want to permit students to use phones for a specific purpose, it allows it.
Or a field trip or something during instructional day.
During school-related events and functions, okay.
Yeah, so it was, I think that was covering both things.
So does that mean, I know the answer's no, but I'm just playing devil's advocate. Could someone say, well, you're at a soccer game, a teacher didn't specifically say you could use this, you can't?
No.
That's for school.
Bell to bell.
So, okay.
Because our instructional day.
So this, so this would be a school-related event, bell, in between, bell to bell.
Like a field trip or, yeah, something like that. Or you're in class and the teacher's like, hey, we're going to do, I don't know what those little surveys are.
Or E may have been intended to be an option if after-school, if school-related functions were not chosen as an option.
Like if we were going to prohibit it during school.
Right. Yeah, that's kind of what I think that-
I guess my point is, I don't know that E needs to be there.
I don't think it does either. But I would like, it would be nice to have something in here that says that we can, um-
That's a supervising adult.
The language was suggested, Sammy, I think you said, as authorized by a supervising adult during school-related events and functions during the instructional day.
During the instructional day.
Or it could just say during the instructional day, we don't even need the during school-related events.
Yeah, I would take out school-related events because-
As authorized by a supervising adult during the instructional day.
Yeah.
So change it, like, that's a good change.
Yeah, that, I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I like that. That's all I have.
And then there's another reference to ex, extracurricular or school event at the bottom of the second page.
So, but what's going to stop a teacher then? I guess my concern with that is, does the statute allow that? Because what's going to stop a teacher from saying, I'm the cool kid and I'm going to let you guys use, we're ha, we have downtime today. I'm going to let you use your cellphone here.
It says, um, let's see, there was something in here about that.
Those two people sitting down back there.
You mean, like, during class?
Yeah, I mean, if we just say as authorized by a supervising adult, that means a teacher has the discretion to say, you can bring your phones to class tomorrow and use them. I mean, and do you want that discretion? Do you want them to have that discretion?
Because I think what we shared, correct me if I'm wrong, that at this point, anything a student can do on a phone, per se, they can do it on a school-issued Chromebook. So you can do a cahoot on a phone, but you don't need your phone.
So if we want to carve out an exception for a field trip, for example, can you keep E and then EG right, field trip?
Why do we want to do that, though? What's the point of-
So just take it out altogether.
Letting your kids, what's the point of letting them have a phone on a field trip?
If I'm at fossil park and I uncover a cool little fossil and I'm going to take a, I know, wrong grade level, but I'm going to the zoo and I, I don't-
Do high schoolers take field trips?
Is that happening?
Yeah, they do.
Here, here's a perfect example that would apply to this. Our, our kids go to the museum, the Toledo Art Museum, and then they do all sorts of projects here. If I were a teacher, I could potentially sit there and say, I want you to photograph X, Y, Z on the field trip and then upload it to your Google Drive. You could do that now, but we're talking about a situation that I don't, from a policy standpoint, I think it just depends on whether or not we want to go into such depth with this. There are things that we allow, for example, if we're doing a pep assembly and my StuCo president wants to do a playlist that plugs into our system and it's attached to their phone, as an admin, we'd say, okay, plug it in and, and play your setlist. I think it just depends on how far you want to go down the rabbit hole of specificity.
So what you're saying is that we should keep this as authorized by a supervising adult during school-related events and functions? And then you'll deal with the teacher who?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I would say the opposite, I think we take it out and then the teacher could get permission to do that if they wanted, to them, right?
But then they're violating board policy.
So then would we indicate, then would we go with letter A? And when we say, when the teacher or authorized supervising adult authorizes a student to use PCD for instructional purposes during instructional time?
I, I, I don't think we checked any of these.
We did not.
We didn't. There's none of these that need to be in here.
E was checked.
F was, it was not-
Yeah, you're right. E and F, we let that.
But rereading it now, I don't think we need to check any of them. If it's during the instructional school day, we are now going to tell students that phones need to be off and in a locker, there, there shouldn't really be any exceptions to that.
Well, but like what Mark just said, like, if he wants to let him-
Do we take them on a field trip during the instructional school day? If they're going to the art museum?
It would be during the instructional day, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's rare.
But, but we would allow students to take them on that field trip?
Not necessarily. I mean, we, in this new policy, if they were coming back to the building, they'd stay, presumably.
What are your thoughts?
I mean, I like what you said about during the supervising adult, during the instructional day. I think it gives a little leeway, but still stops the other thing, but doesn't make it so that they're violating a policy if we don't have that little caveat.
It just gives a little flexibility.
I like the flexibility, so, I mean, I'm really comfortable with-
So we're keeping E?
E.
But, but edit the EG, I think just take those, those are-
Would take it out.
Take out the EG.
Those are for examples and just-
As authorized by a supervising adult during instructional day.
Or like what Mark just said, supervi, the prin, building principal, as authorized by the building principal.
I like, I like that better.
You guys look at the bottom.
I mean, anybody in that building's a supervising adult.
Right, yeah, right.
If you put the building principal, then if that art teacher is taking kids-
Then he can approve it.
And go to Mark or say, hey, are you okay with this?
Yeah.
I, I, I like that.
So building principal or building administrator? In case you're not there. Which one do you want? Building principal?
Building administrator works.
Building administrator. Hold on.
Yep.
Hope so, I need to- Where did you say to look next, Sammy?
Um, at the bottom of the second page, there's a paragraph that starts with when the use of or possession of PCDs. I don't like that abbreviation. Um, the bottom of the second page, there's another reference to extracurricular events.
Go to the bottom. Go here.
In green, okay.
Since we're not covering extracurricular events and wondering if we can work with that language. Here in the last line in the green.
Oh, and it actually says, yeah, adult supervising an extracurricular. And you would suggest what again?
I would just take out that, um-
Yeah.
I would just take out the word, um-
Why does it say extracurricular?
Well, we could just change it to mimic the same language we just discussed or as permitted by an administrator at a school event or something like that. Starting with adult supervising, just change that to what we were just discussing.
Adult supervising.
I think we should take extracurricular or school event out because we're not prohibiting them during those events.
Yep.
Right.
Right.
So just take it out of there.
I, I agree.
It's fine. Yeah, just strike it right from there.
Or sponsor, take that out too? I don't know where that-
Yeah, I don't, who's, what's a sponsor?
I don't know, so take out sponsor. Supervising adult, okay.
Do elementary kids tend to have phones? Fifth graders. Do we have to talk about release time for religious instruction in phones?
Under that policy.
Yeah.
Wrap this one up.
Actually, it's their main business.
Well, this one would cover that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, would, because they're being released during the instructional day.
And so, no, I don't think we're taking their phones.
So they would not be taking their phones.
Can't take their phones. Unless the building principal approves it.
I think I may have exhausted all my questions.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? All right, well-
We see this in a pretty version for this.